The February 4th Parker Town Council Meeting at 7:00 PM. All council members are present with the exception of Councilman John Dyack and Councilman Joshua Rivero. Council and audience, if you guys would do me a favor, hey scouts, before you find your seat, come on down up front. I told you guys you had a job, it's time to do your duty. Come on down. If you all would just go ahead and stand and join me and these wonderful scouts in the Pledge of Allegiance. So guys, come up front. You get to have the most important job tonight that's leading us all and honoring our nation. So the way it's gonna work is this. Don't worry about the people behind you. They're just gonna sit there and stare at you, right? You see the flag behind me? We're all gonna turn around, face the flag, and we're gonna wait to hear you start the Pledge of Allegiance. When you start it, everyone behind you will join in. Sound good? Alright, you gotta smile while you do it. Pledge only sounds good when you're smiling, alright? Alright, floor is yours, guys.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fantastic job. Good job, guys. Alright, now you can grab your seats. Perfect. Alright, so special presentations. Michelle, do we have any special presentations tonight? Excellent. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the Parker Chamber of Commerce Updates. Mr. Houston, come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I did not park in the white zone, so I'm good.
Excellent.
Or the red zone. A few updates from the Parker Area Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to announce our 2019 officers that were just elected at our leadership retreat on Friday here in Parker. Our 2019 Board Chair is Don Brewer, CEO of Colorado Escrow. Our Vice Chair is Omar Castillo from Community Banks of Colorado. Our Secretary is Brian Taylor of Brown &amp; Taylor Law Firm on Main Street. Treasurer is Tierney Aldridge with the Denver Agency. And our past Chair position will be Tim Tate of Tate &amp; Company. So we're excited to have our leadership team in place for 2019. I had an incredible leadership retreat on part of it Thursday evening, the main part of it on Friday. Thanks for, thanks to Councilman Toborg for joining us for a bit there early in the morning before we kicked off our day. Also like to announce a couple new team members at the Parker Chamber of Commerce. Hanny Apollin and Heidi Bauer have joined our team in the last week or so, and they'll be doing some good work for us at the Chamber and working on some special projects and some customer service and visitor center duties as well as part of that. But we're excited to have them join our team. We're heavy into the production process and marketing component piece for our 2019 Parker Magazine and Visitors Guide. So we're looking forward to another successful issue of that coming out later this spring. A few things we've been working on in workforce lately, which continues to be the number one thing that we hear from the business community day in and day out. We, as a member of the CTE Task Force, Career and Technical Education Task Force for Douglas County School District, we had our first meeting right around Christmas time. We've had some follow-up conversations since then, but we're really looking at focusing county-wide of how we can really get students engaged in the business community. When you look at the number of students graduating in Douglas County over the next 10 years that do not have any plans after high school, so statistically, they will not go to a two- or four-year school. And you add that combined, or you combine that with the number of students who will graduate, go on to a two- or four-year university, but within one to two years not complete that education, and they're back in the workforce. Those two groups combined over the next 10 years are 40,000 students. And we talk about workforce challenges and how can we build that workforce in the future. That's really where a big piece of our focus is going forward in partnership with the school district of building that awareness and engaging those students and future graduates in our workforce opportunities through internships and apprenticeships. We had Dr. Thomas Tucker, Superintendent of Douglas County Schools, and Ted Knight, Assistant Superintendent, joined us for part of our day at our retreat last Friday, just spending some in-depth time talking about some of those partnerships going forward. But we're excited for where that's going, and I think it's really gonna have a big impact on our business community. We've been looking at a workforce project in partnership with the school district that we were able to have a conversation here at Town Hall last week to update town staff as to some of those exciting things that we're working on. We're also working over the last few weeks, coming out in the next week or two, but we're working on some legislation with some of our elected officials at the state level to introduce some new state legislation that would make it easier for some of the internships and apprenticeship opportunities. Right now, there's a Colorado state law that requires 1,060 hours per year of the students being in the classroom for that graduation requirement. Part of that challenge is it precludes schools from letting some of those students out for some of these internship opportunities. So we're looking at tweaking that to make sure that there's credit given for those students looking at those career opportunities going forward. On Parker Days, which is 122 days from today approximately, I won't go down to the hour minute, but the countdown calendar's on my phone. We're excited to share with you that we've partnered with EMG, which is Event Management Group. Dean and Peg Minos and their team head up that organization. They're based in Denver. I take that back. They were based in Denver. They're actually relocating to Parker to use this as their base, so we're excited for that. You may not be familiar with EMG and their team, but I'm sure you're familiar with some of the projects that they've either created or have been a part of. Taste of Colorado, they actually created 35 years ago and have managed that for a few decades. The Parade of Lights Festival in downtown Denver, Taste of Chicago, and Harley Davidson's 100th Birthday Celebration and some of their previous birthday celebrations, because they've also had some operations in the Midwest, in Illinois and Wisconsin as well. So we're excited to partner with them. We're really appreciative and looking forward to our renewed partnership with the town for Parker Days going forward. We've started a series of meetings, small group meetings with town departments. We had five of those meetings today, actually. We met with Public Works, Parks and Rec, Customer Service, Legal, and the Clerk's Office. And what we're doing is basically taking a deeper dive on different components and segments of Parker Days, looking at how have we done it? Is there a more efficient way to do it? And how can we become better partners with the town to not only create a great festival experience for the attendees, but also look at what impact does that have financially on resources for the town and for the Chamber as well? And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Dennis, Council, do you have any questions for Dennis?
Remind us of the dates of Parker Days?
June 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th, Thursday through Sunday.
Okay, cool. Dennis, thank you very much. It sounded like you got coming over a little cold or something there.
I'm on the front end of it, unfortunately.
Oh geez, then what are you doing, man? Come on.
And my apologies, I'm gonna scoot because I've got a 3 o'clock alarm clock, or 3 AM alarm clock for an early flight tomorrow, so I'm gonna bail on you.
Alright buddy, appreciate it. Thank you. Hope you feel better. Alright, so now Shelley, you might not want to give your next update since he was getting sick and he's at that microphone. Yeah, exactly. Alright, Downtown Business Alliance update. Shelley?
How far back can I stand?
Yeah, exactly. You're good.
Can you still hear me?
We can still hear you.
Alright, I know this isn't protocol, but I'm gonna say Happy New Year. I know it's in the beginning of February, but I wasn't here in January, and I'm just excited about 2019 and how the DBA has grown and the Town of Parker is working in an alliance with the Downtown Business Alliance, and I so appreciate that, so we're really looking forward to a very productive and prosperous 2019. So I guess I can't say that anymore to anybody else, right? After February 1st, it's not protocol, right? Okay, so I just wanted to give a couple updates. I don't have a lot. We had a really well-attended meeting in January. It was really great to see because usually January is such a quiet month. We had probably 30, 35 businesses, which is our record for a January Downtown Business Alliance meeting. And what we came out of that, what became out of that meeting, most importantly, is that we have a new committee in our Downtown Business Alliance called the Connectivity Committee. And we have several members that are serving on that committee. Their sole focus is to work on developing connectivity between East and West Parker, on East and West Main Street, with the new Boutique Hotel and all the development that's going on in that area, new businesses, new restaurants, et cetera. We need to, we are challenged by a way to find an ease for people to move. You know, so they're downtown on this side of Parker Road, but maybe they wanna go shopping over at the Boutique Hotel and all those, that shopping center. So there's some really great ideas, just a couple little fun ones, like a trolley idea, you know, some golf cart-type apparatuses. So we're doing a lot of, that particular committee is gonna do research into that. And I think if we can have all the businesses participate, East and West, we already have support from the owners of the Boutique Hotel to be a part of this. We can actually have it run from the library down to Culvers and back. Might be a really great way to keep, you know, at least on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, keep people moving up and down Main Street. So more to follow. We've gotta do some research, and that's, you know, that was the exciting piece that we were discussing mostly in January. Our focus really this year is to stimulate the businesses in downtown Parker. One thing that resonated in our meeting in January is that retailers were slower this year in downtown Parker than they were in previous years. And, you know, that may be a concern with online marketing, online sales, et cetera, all across the country. But our downtown really needs to be challenged, and it's up to us and the town to come up with ideas to drive people to downtown Parker and see it as a destination, not an afterthought, and have it be flourishing with retailers. So we're excited and hopeful that there is going to be some new development, you know, with all the My Main Street Project. And we hope to see at least one of those projects happen this year so that we can have something for our residents to be excited about, something fresh and new to come down, and then that will help all of our other retailers and restaurants. So that's our primary focus for this 2019 year. And our next meeting will be February 13th, a week from this Wednesday, and we're looking forward to having another great meeting. We have a guest speaker that's going to be speaking to our small businesses on how to market themselves and give them some really good ideas. So that's our focus for February. So, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Council questions for Shelley? No? Alright.
Tony's not gonna be driving the trolley, right?
No, he doesn't have his license.
He'll be riding it though, for sure.
Thanks, Shelley.
Thank you.
Alright, next item up is public comment. This is our time for general public comment for items that are not currently on our agenda. If you're here for an item that's on our agenda, there'll be public comment at that specific time. So no action will be taken on this item, and you have three-minute time limit. You're gonna see there's a clock above me and a clock back on the wall, and that's what we would, we need a little stand. Actually, Jim, would you take the microphone and just set it down lower for him? So he can go right onto the smaller area? No, no, go ahead and take it over to the side, buddy. Right there, so he can see you too, because you're hidden. Alright, alright, but sit tight real quick. I gotta finish explanation of what it is before you get going, okay? So with general public comment, no action will be taken on these items. It's just an opportunity for you to address Council. If you're here for a specific item on the agenda, there'll be public comment at that time. There's a little clock above me that says three minutes, and I've got one on the back wall. After you state your name and address, that clock will start. And when it gets to zero, I'm not being rude, but I'll say thank you very much, okay? So with that, I see we have a participant. If you could state your name and address for the record, please. Oh, we gotta turn on the microphone too, or...
I don't know my address. 11568 Tarot Court.
And what's your name, buddy?
Kirk.
Alright, go ahead, Kirk.
Hi, my name is Kirk Losi. I go to Challenge to Excellence. I moved here from Tucson, Arizona, where I had six to 20 chickens. When I moved to Parker, we thought we moved where we could have chickens. Since I have learned the law says no end, was made a long time ago. Times are changing. I learned that chickens must be 200 feet between the chicken coop and the person's house. The law also says I can have 50 chickens if I have the space. I know the benefits of chickens are healthy eggs, gives responsibility, it reduces bugs, snakes, and mites infestations, and are a good thing to have around. I propose that you change the law to allow hens and no roosters. Chickens are quieter than dogs. They poop less than dogs. If I can have chickens, I will keep the area clean and I will take care of the chickens. Please consider this change. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kirk. Really appreciate it. Alright. Alright, next up, is there anyone else here for public comment? I just like any time that we can use the word poop in public comment. I love it. Alright, seeing none other, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment at 7:15 PM and move on to reports, items, and comments from Mayor and Council. Do you have any?
I don't.
Okay, Jeff?
So three things. I attended the Chamber's Leadership Retreat last Friday for a couple hours before, again, they kicked me out. It's a trend, I know. We also had our first Recreation Department Liaison Meeting today with Councilmember Lewis, and Councilmember Pogue was present. And then we also had a session on getting up to speed on development fees this morning, or this afternoon.
Okay, excellent. Renee?
Unfortunately, last week I was in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and it was minus 60 degrees below zero.
That's just ridiculous, beyond ridiculous. Debbie?
As Jeff said, we had our first Parks and Rec Liaison Meeting today. And just a couple of things out of that is that our Parks and Rec Department and facilities are one of the lowest, leanest in the entire state. We run such a financially tight ship. There's not a lot of fluff in our administrative part. And some of the things that we'll be working on this year, improvements to H2O, Ryan Pool, also the playground equipment at Orion, H2O Park, Orion Park, the Ruder Hess Development in the High Plains Trail. The Racket, the Parker Racket Club maybe is going to be coming. Their plan is to be open in March, and maybe we'll have a tour in February, because they're really, they're really, really getting close. Also had, Renee and I had H&R Human Resource Liaison Meeting this afternoon, and they, on Friday, just on February 1, they implemented an employee engagement survey. Today is Monday. There are already 117 completed surveys, and 29 have started, and it closes by the 15th. So a lot is, they're more prompt than maybe some other groups. So that's all I have now.
Alright, fantastic. Alright, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is the number seven, Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine. Will they be enacted with one motion and one vote unless a council member asks to have something pulled out for separate discussion? Ordinances on the Consent Agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. So Council, with that, I would entertain a motion or discussion on Consent Agenda Items 7A through 7D.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion from Renee and a second from Debbie. In just a second, and now I'm vamping right now. A little thing will pop up on your computer screen. Do, do, do. Oh, there it is. On mine, at least. Okay, so you'll vote and then hit save. And then in just a second, by the magic of technology, up above... Ba-da-bing! Motion passes 4-0. I think we need like music for it, don't we? Ding! Something like that. Can we work on it? No, I'm just kidding. Alright, so next item up is item number eight. This is our public hearings. Now, the applicant for item eight, which is Resolution 19-009, has asked to have this item continued to a date certain of March 4th, 2019. So Council, I would need a motion to continue item number eight, which is Resolution Number 19-009, to a date certain of March 4th, 2019.
So moved. Second?
Motion by Renee and a second by Debbie. And I start the vamp again while the buttons come. There's mine and yours up, so please vote. And motion passes unanimously. Next item up is item number nine. This is for ordinances. Number 9A is ordinance number 1.527 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to approve the memorandum of understanding for the 18th Judicial District Juvenile Assessment Center by and between the Town of Parker and the counties of Arapahoe, Douglas, Albert, and Lincoln, the State of Colorado, the Arapahoe, Douglas, Albert, and Lincoln Counties Sheriff's Offices, and the cities, towns of Aurora, Bennett, Beaumar, Castle Pines North, Centennial, Cherry Hills Village, Columbine Valley, Deer Trail, Englewood, Foxfield, Greenwood Village, Glendale, Larkspur, Littleton, Sheraton, Lone Tree, Castle Rock, Parker, Elizabeth, Kiowa, Simla, Arriba, Genoa, Hugo, and Lyman. Chief King, you are gonna, I was gonna try to do that with one breath, but I'm just too tired, so. Chief?
Excuse me, Mayor and Council, and I'm glad you said that. Does it sound?
Does it sound? Yeah.
We need sanitizer.
There you go, you're on. You're good.
Wow, okay, that's working now.
Yeah.
Now, I'm glad that you mentioned all those jurisdictions. As the mayor says, tonight you have an ordinance in front of you that is a memorandum of understanding between the Town of Parker and the 18th Judicial Juvenile Center, which, for folks who are not understanding what that is, it is a facility that we're able to take juveniles to that need assistance and help, as well as to place them until they can get some type of arraignment with the courts. We've been in participation with this group for quite some time. The funding is partially from each jurisdiction. It all depends on your population base. Ours is 22,500 approximately that we are paying for this year. I so move that this is a great partnership, and we definitely need them. Any questions?
Okay. Council, do you have any questions for Chief before we go to public comment?
I do, just a quick one. I understand that the 18th Judicial District is looking at a split. So do you anticipate coming back for an amendment to this particular agreement?
You mean if they get the new judicial district, those 23? I'm sure we'll probably have to, if that passes.
Okay. Alright, no other questions? With that, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:22 PM if there's anyone in the audience wishing to address Council on this item. Seeing new movement, and at least the scouts are still awake. I didn't know if anyone after, okay, you guys are doing good? Alright, seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:22 PM, and I would entertain a motion on item 9A.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.527 on second reading. Second?
We have a motion from Debbie and a second from Renee. In just a few moments, there will be the little box again. Ba-da-bing! Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is item 9B. This is ordinance number 9.267.2 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance approving the First Amendment to Agreement regarding the design and construction of drainage and flood control improvements for Cherry Creek at the KOA Property Town of Parker Agreement Number 17-05.19B, Project Number 106722, by and between Urban Drainage and Flood Control District and the Town of Parker. Jacob, you're gonna lead us.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. The item you have before you tonight is an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Parker Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, and we will be bringing in the Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority with this agreement. The agreement is to fund final design and construction for the southern segment of Cherry Creek at the KOA property. The initial IGA funded $630,000, which was a concept design and partial funding for construction. The initial IGA was a 50% match between Urban Drainage and the Town of Parker. And the preliminary design was for the entire reach, whereas this final design will be for the southern segment of the entire reach. And the preliminary design was complete in 2018, and this amendment for final design in the southern reach is anticipated to be complete in the third quarter of 2019. The town's stormwater budget for 2019 included this project as a capital improvement project for $150,000, with Urban Drainage and Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority also providing funding as shown below. So as you can see on the slide, initially, the Town of Parker and Urban Drainage both contributed $315,000. With this amendment, the town will contribute $150,000. Urban Drainage will contribute $200,000, and the Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority will contribute $170,000. So total Parker contributions are $465,000, which is leveraged with the other entities for a $1.15 million project. This agreement may be amended in 2020 to fund the northern segment of the reaches if it is the desire of Council and Urban Drainage and Flood Control District. At that time, we'll go through the same budgeting processes for our respective agencies. To orient yourself, the Cherry Creek at KOA overall property, or project location, starts at the north at the 20-mile curve adjacent to the Flat Acres Farm, and it goes south all the way down Cherry Creek adjacent to the Parker Water Salisbury Effluent Pond. The southern segment that you have before you tonight for final design is actively downcutting with bank erosion and channel erosion. The slide that you see here is an arrow pointing to where the bank erosion is. It's about a three-foot cut. And if it's left to continue, it could expose underground utilities, causing issues. It could cause issues with the pedestrian bridge abutment at the McCabe Meadows Crossing, and also the trail and adjacent properties. This is a picture of the concept design that was done this previous year. For the entire reach, the consultant identified grade control structures and bank protection areas along the entire segment of Cherry Creek. The red arrow that you see on there is the southern segment that you have before you tonight for us to go to final design and construction. And this is just a blow-up of the Segment C reach that we were talking about tonight with some proposed grade control structures that the engineer identified were needed, as well as areas of bank protection that may be needed. So this project will provide engineering and a stabilization design for the Cherry Creek Channel. It'll reduce erosion and sediment transport downstream. It will be eligible for urban drainage and flood control maintenance in the future. And it provides an engineering design and construction for improvements up to the KOA property border. So that staff recommends approval of ordinance number 9.267.2, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Jacob, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Council, do you have any questions for Jacob?
I do.
Cheryl?
Couple of questions. First, it looks like, at least on the western side of this area, it is Parker Water and Sand Land. Have you talked to them about participating with the funding?
On the western side, it's all Town of Parker Salisbury Park land, and so Parker Water wouldn't have a stake in any of the stabilization associated with that.
Except they have the ponds along that. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, the actual pond, the area where the effluent pond is outside the limits that we need for the stabilization for Cherry Creek.
And my second question is, have you already been receiving approval from the Corps of Engineers?
So that will come with this final design. We need to get to 60% level drawings before we get in front of the Corps of Engineers, so that is included in the scope of what you have before you tonight. Our engineering consultant does have an ecological and environmental consultant on board that will start the conversation. will start the conversations for 404 permitting.
Do, what timeframe do you anticipate for that process with the Corps?
We're hoping to get this in front of the Corps in the third quarter of this year, and it would be what they call an individual permit, which is a lengthier permit process that normally takes about six months.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? No? All right, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:28 p.m. If there's anyone here wishing to address council on this item. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:28, and I would entertain a motion on item 9B.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.267.2 on second reading. Second?
Motion by Renee and a second by Debbie. Council, in just a sec, the box will pop back up, and then you will vote. Motion passes unanimously. With no further business before council, we will adjourn at 7:29 p.m. Have a good evening, everybody.